Let's get started, we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, I know Dave's out of country and Sharon is teaching a class tonight, so it's John and Brian and I this evening. Good enough for a quorum, I guess. Vance, you wanna go through the minutes?
I'd like perhaps to read the special.
Yeah, that's sounds good, let's go read the special one.
Just to make sure I have this accurate.
Correct.
We met on the fifteenth, five o'clock at City Hall. John, Dave, Sharon, Brian, Corey was absent. Also present, James Dollman, Michelle Frosted, Andrea Bowe, Eric Dodd. The agenda item was the conducting of interviews for the position of the city administrator. There were candidate, the candidates were, three were selected out of a pool of twenty-five. I think that's the correct number.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. We selected Brian Cleveland, Keith Burke, and Brent Holker for interviews. At eight fifty-eight P M, we adjourned a special meeting and went into an executive session. Is that, am I accurate on all that?
You guys ought to help me out here if that's what it was.
Yep.
Is there anything you wanted to go over with the general meeting from last time around either, just a clarifying thing or?
I don't even have minutes on the February.
The fifth meeting? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, they're online. Meeting, they're in that folder, so I was just doing a quick review. But do we need to approve these minutes individually?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the February fifteenth meeting?
So moved, John. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we wanna do the February fifth meeting minutes.
Just gonna quick run, we just wanna quick read through them.
Now, let me just look here. Double check here.
Looks accurate, I don't see anything.
No, John, you seeing anything there, otherwise, otherwise I will accept a motion to accept the minutes. So moved on the fifth.
Second.
John, Brian is the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, consent agenda.
Okay, thanks Corey, I need a consent.
Oh, Matea, you.
Yep, I have.
She's the driver tonight.
She's driving?
She's driving.
Alright.
Where is that online?
It's not. One second.
Oh. Oh, it's not out on SharePoint?
No.
Okay. Are you gonna send it out via email?
Um, I'll upload right quick. Might need to refresh to see.
Oh, it's out on SharePoint?
Now it is, yep.
Okay. Got it.
Got anything on there Vance that we need to kinda do a second look at?
I do have one comment, we'll get there.
Okay.
If we could scroll down to item nineteen.
Jetway, okay.
Yep.
For those of you who aren't aware, Mr. Dollman and I have been working with Bob Benson, there's still issues over there. And I think we've all come to a satisfactory conclusion on that. And Mr. Benson was so pleased with what we did, he brought me a check for three hundred dollars. We applied against that invoice, he says I might help you pay for this.
Okay, well, that's awesome.
Well, I hope you thanked him appropriately.
Yeah, no doubt.
But I mean, what was the conclusion, Jimmy, just go ahead, what was the conclusion on that?
The conclusion was there wasn't anything really to be worried about.
Okay, so you guys didn't, everything looked like it was.
Yeah, it was awful, I sent out that memo to the council on what we found that, so. There was just some concern, he had some anomalies in his house and he just wanted them checked out. We had, there had never been a camera of sewer tape quality, run down it, it was always plumbers, something that they pushed down it. So it took the opportunity, tried to go up through the main, of course, he's got a ninety-degree lateral, so he couldn't make the corner, but we were able to get down his cleanout and come from the right-of-way line back through. And everything looked pretty, pretty clean and good, nothing to concern, so. He was pretty happy with that, and then I'll provide him, I have a copy, I've been trying to catch him to provide a copy of the tape to him, but. The couple times I stopped by, so he's been gone, so.
Okay, well, cool, at least that's squared away then, so.
Yes.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Mayor, item number thirty-three, payable to Interstate here is the planning services for two thousand seventeen. Prior to this year, I, right or wrong, I lumped that into engineering services. I'm now gonna separate that as a line item on the P and L, so you guys can help track that. And Jim, I don't know, will you bill us once a year, or I don't know how that's gonna happen, but we'll, we'll deal with it.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
So was that, is that the planning services for all year?
Yes.
Is that a budgetary number, or?
We grouped it into engineering services.
That was the big pocket one.
Okay. What, was that part of the, what we had planned, the eighty-five K that we had allocated for planning?
That's my question.
Just last year?
I don't think it was, but I'm not familiar with the bill, I apologize.
Well, that's what I'm wondering is.
We had a planning contract with Brent that was, I believe, above and beyond that.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is this the only check that came for the planning services?
I can certainly look into it.
Or was there more, Vance, do you know?
Well, I'll have to look, but I believe the, I think the invoice said that maybe the final bill or something.
Final bill for twenty-seventeen?
Let's put.
I can, I can look back through our invoices.
Well, that should be in the report that Damon sent, right?
Yep, yeah, I believe it was a line item on that, on that one.
So we could cross check that.
I didn't see it right there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And I know we've talked about, you know, getting a little more specific on some of these line items, so that's kinda what I'm trying to do here.
Okay.
Yep, and that's fine, that's what we want. The more, the more breakdown we got of this, it'll help a lot more when we get to the budget coming up here, so.
The invoice, actually invoice number three-three-six-two-nine says, "From Interstate Planning Services through the end of two thousand and seventeen." So Jim and I will take a look at that, and maybe we can reclassify that if we need to.
Okay.
That's good, though, just, let's just keep breaking that stuff out, so.
Cause that was the question, how much did we spend for planning services in twenty-seventeen?
Exactly, we were, we're over budget on that line item.
Okay, we are?
Yeah.
For planning?
From last year.
Oh, from twenty-sixteen?
Seventeen.
Oh, just for twenty-seventeen?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright. Okay.
Alright.
You guys got anything else that you see on here that you wanna bring up?
No, Reg is, just curious, what is NDBOA?
Well, the building official.
Okay, that's what.
That's schooling we have twice a year.
Okay.
That's coming up in March.
That's coming up in March, yes, that's correct, it's about the middle of March.
Okay.
Anything else?
Otherwise, the rest of it looks like it's pretty much the usual stuff, so.
Yes, no, I don't see.
One quick thing, item number twenty, I'm sorry, wait a minute, it's item number eighteen. Marvel Tire Service, Perry drives the two thousand and two Ford, we had to put tires on that thing. We're gonna decommission that vehicle, and we now, I put, I purchased the new two thousand and eighteen Dodge Ram. That's gonna be here in about three months.
Okay.
So that's kind of a band-aid fix, we had to put tires on it. So.
Gotta keep it.
That's the way it works.
Gotta keep it motion, so.
I, I think I can sell it for eight hundred bucks and make it back.
There you go.
Hey, at least we'll get our money back.
Maybe the park board needs it.
I think we've gotten our money's worth out of the truck.
Yeah, I think so, too.
It's been around a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Right, make some motion. John is the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Vance, maybe that pickup is something the park board could use for summer help, for taking more around.
No, not a bad idea.
Give it another couple years.
Exactly.
I told Perry he can't ever leave town.
Cause any towing services will cost more than the vehicle.
But I'll check with.
That's not a bad idea.
We'll check on that.
For running around town, it wouldn't be.
They'd be fine for that.
Yep.
Still wanna leave the city a little bit.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, the regular agenda, guys, you look, you gotta add anything to that, I think we, I think we got all the stuff on today, right?
Finally.
I do have something under Sharon, and I did take it off, I don't know if that matters. She just mainstreams.
She sent, she sent me some information on that, so I'll pick that up.
And also, we could probably scratch under Interstate the estimate number three, cause we just approved that, Jim, is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
We'll scratch that, and under Interstate, it'll just be the water meter replacement discussion.
Okay.
Okay, but.
Unless you have something to add.
Well, I'm just thinking, do we wanna briefly talk about the, the surveys for getting the surveys out? I mean, does that include you, or, or is that just us getting the surveys out for the connection development?
We'll add it on, we'll add it on there quick.
Okay.
We can do that, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so again, a motion to approve the agenda addition and subtraction.
So moved.
Okay, John, Brian is the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, changing things around a little bit, year up.
Let's take a look at the end of the year, see how we came out, huh?
Yeah, that'd be alright, let's see where we at.
So which file should we open up, Matea?
From Vance? Oh.
Scroll down.
I thought I had it.
I follow it.
I don't think, did you send me financials?
Did you, are they, everything in that financials folder?
It could be. Do you want me to just pull up December?
Doesn't, doesn't matter, whichever way, wherever.
I'd like to show it.
Show me where we find it.
So the annual financial statement? Vance, is that?
Yes.
So we're looking for the December?
Thirty-one.
December twenty-seventeen, so which one you wanna look at first? The balance sheet, or where's the other part?
Go to.
Financial.
Yep, go up.
Financial and then annual financial statements. And what are we looking at first, revenues or?
You wanna, you wanna.
To the council.
Balance.
The balance sheet first?
Go back one.
Balance sheet? Is that what you said, Vance?
Yep.
Do you look under council?
Or is it?
Under financials, is it?
Maybe we should practice this, Matea, before we.
It's good practice.
I could use training, too, I'm gonna later.
You go under finances and it's annual financial statements?
Yeah, I don't even see that anymore.
Go to the homepage, Jim, of like where you find council meetings.
Okay.
And where council meetings is, there's a folder.
There we go.
Yeah, financials.
Yep.
And then annual financial statements.
Yep.
And then you'll have to scroll down and push the arrow over, cause we're doing balance sheet in December twenty-seventeen. I believe revenues is first.
Do balance?
Yep, this is balance sheet.
Expand it, can you order this finance? There you go. You guys there?
Yep.
Okay.
Go.
End of the year, general fund checking balance, three point four. Council receivable, that, that number represents the water and sewer bills that we mailed out in December. We have three hundred and thirty-six thousand investments, and we'll get to that schedule here in a couple minutes. Just to refresh your memory, on the Sleepy Hollow Riverdale, that stands as a liability. Those funds were transferred to me from Mike Bonn Pleasure, gosh, ten years ago, ten, twelve years ago. They, they set up a separate fund for their road work, and at that time, we were all township, or John and I live, we were township, so that was held by the county. Mike and I talked about, and he says, "Well, I think that should come to you, because we did annex those people in two thousand and four." So any road work, or whether it's overlay, or whatever it may be, we will pony up, the city horse will pony up for funds up to fifty-three grand.
Yep.
Okay, and then we have the next three items, our tax liabilities, two for payroll taxes. General fund balance, one point oh four seven, we have a healthy balance, our general fund is always good. Next item, highway fund. Healthy balance in that.
So, okay, so, did that go up at our net for the highway fund, go up or down last year? Went down slightly, I think, right?
Well, it increases every month, but.
No, I mean, I mean, from, from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, didn't we have a little over nine hundred thousand in that account, and now we've got like eight fifty-ish? Something like that.
I didn't bring two thousand.
Okay, alright, alright.
But Brian, on the footnote there, we did transfer sixty-five thousand.
For this last year.
To heal water and sewer.
Yep.
So that put a little dent in that.
Okay, so maybe that's part of why it increased a little bit.
It's part of that.
Okay. With, with, just to point out that essentially, we spent the money that we got from the state on fixing roads, is essential, that was kinda my point.
Yes.
So.
Right on the bottom, sales tax revenue, we ended up, these are our sales tax collection, based on our home rule chart, home rule charter, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We now have, I got the January deposit, we now have two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in that account as we speak. But the snapshot at the end of the year shows one eighty-five.
Okay.
So that fund is growing real nice, very nicely.
So we're still staying about that twenty-four thousand a month?
Twenty-four to twenty-seven.
Oh, really, it has varied that much?
Yep.
Okay.
And of course, those funds come from the state.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, under the debt service funds, this is money that I've set aside to, to pay Kristen Bond, principal payments for the year. And then we get to capital projects. The first, the first three items up on there are, are very old, nineteen ninety-eights. Billy Harris' street paving was right over here on Third and Fourth. That's fifteen years ago, and I know Brian had mentioned to me here a while back, what should we do with that old money? And I think I told you that, at the end of April, the first of May, when the auditors come in, we'll make a determination on how to handle that, that money. That was cash outlay, out of our pockets.
So you're talking about the Lagoon expansion, right, the three thousand, is that, is that the?
No, the Sparks addition.
Capital project funds?
Capital projects.
Oh.
Second one.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry, sorry, we're in the wrong line.
Okay. Billy Sparks, the Sparks addition, those are attorney fees that we incurred with Onsted Fitch at the time, because we thought Mr. Spark or Dr. Sparks was going to develop it. He didn't, I did bail him back for that money, back in nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-nine, and he never responded, so. That's the way it is. Street paving, forty-four thousand dollars, back in, Perry, when did we pave the streets? We paved the streets, it was an assessment project, but we neglected, for some reason, to, we left gravel from wall to the stop sign at the school.
To ironwood, ironwood there.
Yep. Yes, sir. So the board at the time says, "Well, we can't leave that gravel," so I ponied up for that, and I spent forty-four grand to make it right.
So that, that's just a, that's just a liability on the books, right, that we, we've already paid for it, though.
Oh, years ago, absolutely, but I had to appropriate the expense someplace.
Okay, but now, we should be able to take that off now, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
And like, like I said, I'll discuss that during the.
Through the auditor, we'll get that cleaned up.
I'd like their guidance on how I should handle that.
Cleaned up.
I don't like to make things disappear without a good reason.
Right.
Okay, moving on down the line, we have a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars left in Dreamfields, Dreamfields out there. Item number six.
Was that, was that for, was that for the, putting in the infrastructure in Dreamfields?
Yes.
Do we expect any more expenses? Is there an overlay or anything that needs to be put in place there?
We did the overlay last summer.
It was one of the five projects.
Right.
Yep.
Right, so.
The only thing that remained would be a seal coat.
Is it what?
Seal coat. Made in seal coat.
And as you can see, we have money there to do it.
Right.
So the engineers, the attorneys figured it out correctly.
Right, so either, either A, if we do a seal coat, let's just say it comes out of fifty thousand dollars, we can decide what we wanna do with that remaining balance, either reapply it back to the bond, or something else, to close out that account. So we can decide how we wanna resolve that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's, that's actually the way it's supposed to work, so you have some maintenance money.
Uh huh. Correct.
So that fund is in good shape. Next item, for those of you in the audience, fourteen grand, Fifty-second, we're a little over budget on that one. I will discuss that with Lucas one of these days.
Fifty-second Avenue?
Yes.
Is that, oh, is that from like County Seventeen West?
Yes, I, yes.
Cause that would've been.
That was a shared project?
Yep, we shared that with West Farble.
Ah, okay.
And West, I would've checked the West Farble for seventy-five grand, and it was approved at that time.
So, but in essence, we don't expect any more expenses.
Absolutely, that is dead.
Essentially, and we, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna ask for any more money for that paving, so.
It's a debt issue.
It's, it's basically just getting that off the books at this point.
Correct.
Okay.
Let's see, next item, part of view, we got fifty-two grand left in that account. The Relime Project, Jim and I will work on that on a weekly basis, that's low money that will practice.
So we are over budget on that one. So we gotta figure out how we're gonna fund that additional?
Yeah, well, we're still, you know, we're still on budget on that, but.
Do we, oh, do we, we don't expect any additional income, though, right? I didn't think so, yeah, cause we got the bond already.
You'll get a reimbursement for the final cost from that, and the final administrative fees, the final engineering fees. But, so that would be something you.
So we'll carry, we'll carry this on the books essentially this year, and then we'll close it out in twenty eighteen.
In due time.
Okay.
Let's see, now we're at seventy-third paving, OT is working on the bond on that one, as well as Arrowood Second, is that correct, Lucas?
Yep.
Think I'm right on that, so those numbers will, will true up themselves when that bond money comes in, but as we speak, it hasn't. I don't know what the schedule is on that, Lucas, but.
They're working on some bonds, I believe? And that, those are together on the same line to save costs?
Yes. Typically, Onsted Fitch will groups as much as they can together to get the best rates. Slight deficit in water and sewer, I'll talk to Jim about that, to see what we're at there. SSL in Farble, that's the current balance in that fund after the loan payments. And we know that's, that's work in progress. Lost River, we have a little over two million dollars left in that account. Two seventeen-four, and Street, two seventeen-seven, those are attorney's fees, or, oh, I'm not sure, they could be engineering, I think they're engineering fees.
I don't see that was engineering.
But they will heal themselves eventually, we will bond those two as well.
Which, Jim?
We've got.
Twenty seventeen seventeen?
Yep.
Twenty seventeen seven?
Those will eventually be bonded. As well as, if you scroll down, Matea, or Brian, who's ever driving, the same with two seventeen-eight.
Be nice to do them all on the same line.
Uh huh.
I think two seventeen-eight, is that made for growth? I think it is.
Yeah, I think it is.
But that's, again, work in progress. Water and sewer fund, we're a little deficit there, sixty grand, we're gonna, we're gonna get out of that, that will show a good balance by the end of two thousand and eighteen, I'm confident of that. Once we get the new rates scheduled.
So right now, we're, we're gonna cover that with our general fund expenses?
Yes, sir, yeah. And then we'll move on to, I think the next schedule will be the list of investments that I currently have with.
So you wanna do the appropriations next? Cause that was it, right?
Oh, we should've, we should've put this all in, well, it's okay.
Yeah, it's alright, which one do you wanna do, the appropriations, are there revenues or appropriations?
Let's go to revenues first.
Okay.
Revenues. A few months ago, when we all sat down to do our budget, to try to take a, was it SWAG guess that?
Yep.
I mean, I'm impressed.
Yep, pretty close.
We did really well, we, we took in seven hundred and fifty-four grand, and we estimated seven fifty, so. Those are, those are good numbers to look at.
So it's just surprising that the cigarette, like, for example, the cigarette tax, it was just interesting why that would, you know. Almost double, right, just, just pick one that, you know, it's just interesting how some of the numbers come in. I don't know how that number is appropriated anyway, how do they, how's the state calculate that amount, I have no idea.
You take a small town like Forest, twenty-five, twenty-six hundred people, we, we got seven thousand dollars, what is Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, what do they get?
Yeah.
Right?
Interesting, isn't it?
Yeah.
But they send it to me, so I take it.
But like, even the homestead credit, that was still, that one was odd, why, why did we budget thirty-three thousand and got only eleven hundred?
I don't know, I may have to rethink that one, maybe a reclassification there that didn't quite come out right, but I think we lumped in, we lumped in three items there.
Oh.
We, we lumped in miscellaneous, homestead, and transmission tax to total thirty-three grand.
Okay.
The other one, too, is like the state tax revenue, that was lower than what we were projecting, too?
Yes.
Anticipate similar situation next year as well.
But we look at the big, the broad picture.
Big picture.
So the interesting, so this, was it the, the building permits or the street bonds that came in so much higher than expected?
Well, yes, most definitely, almost doubled it.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, is, is it street bonds, is it, I, I guess I don't understand the bond, is that the street bonds? Or was that this? The building permit slash ST bonds, what's the ST bonds?
Okay. GL number forty-one twenty-three, when Perry sells a building permit, or when Perry sells a new house, we collect as a.
A thousand dollars.
Yes, yes, and whatever. And, uh, whatever, he goes by his rate, the, goes by the dollar amount and Perry determines a certain amount of figure.
Right.
Uh, in addition to that, there's a thousand dollar street bond.
Okay, so there's...
That is in, that's in that number. And I'll show you when we get to the appropriations.
Okay.
How it goes the other way.
Okay, all right.
And that may be something we want, might want to reclassify for eighteen.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see it just the value.
Yep.
On the permits on that.
Absolutely.
What we're getting. Uh, cause thinking about when you, when Perry sells a house, should say sells a house, but gives a permit, you also pay the, what is it, fifteen hundred dollars for the hookup fees?
Yeah, except for, uh, uh, River's Edge.
Right.
That's seven fifty. We cut that in half and that was our green rate.
Right, exactly. So, would that be, how do you, how do you record those figures?
Those, those in...
That would go into...
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Which, what now? Say that again.
The hookup fees.
The fifteen hundred.
Okay, prior to... Those hookup fees, I populated building permits, account number forty-one twenty-three. I'm gonna change that going forward in eighteen. And when we get to the bottom of this slide, you will, I will show you where that account will be populated.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, John?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think you're just, you're just saying that you're separating, breaking down some of those figures into...
I will, I will be doing that moving forward. Because I will also help heal the water and sewer fund as well.
Absolutely.
Right.
Which is a big deal.
Right.
And prior years, you know, we were scrutinized as much as we are now because we, you know, we got low money out there and so, you know, people are taking a hard look at these numbers.
Right.
And we need, I'm gonna true that up.
Okay.
Well, it, it subsidize the incomes of staff.
Yep.
You know, justifies where, why we need the added staff. You have those funds that are helping to pay for that, it's not necessarily tax dollars that's going into that.
Exactly. Yep. Okay, any other questions on the, uh, general fund revenue there?
No.
For the year, we took in four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in, uh, special assessment revenue, that means when people pay their real estate taxes, uh, that's a separate line item that, uh, that we keep track of. And we, we hope that number keeps growing. Okay? And then I think we'll get into the appropriations, okay, this is, this is our water and sewer fund here for the year. We took in four hundred and twenty-five thousand for the year and forty-six thousand for the month. If you look at, uh, if you guys will look at account number forty-four seventy-four, hookup fees, that's the, that's the line item that will change in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
I'm gonna populate that.
Okay.
Okay?
Anyone want to look at appropriations? Why am I not seeing that?
Go back to the top, the list.
It's still under annual financial statements?
Yep, yep.
Get it drilled in there and then you gotta go to, uh...
Go down.
It should be appropriations dash December twenty seventeen.
Just go to the next.
Probably in your last grouping.
Two thousand.
One through fifteen, fifteen through thirty and a, fifteen, thirty and thirty-four, I think.
Okay, we, we need to change how we're, how we're showing this. What I'd like to see is balance sheet, investment schedule, liability schedule, so we don't have to keep bouncing around.
Yep.
And we'll work on that.
Yep.
Okay. Appropriations. Uh, general funds, scroll down a little bit more, here's where we missed the boat. We're off about fifty-one grand there, in other words, we overspent the budget.
Yeah, part of it, you know, so that was, that was one question, so for example, I mean, you look at the attorney fees and the city engineers fees, and those are almost double, you know, what we had budgeted, so I guess that was one question. So, the time that we allocate for Jim to do some preliminary engineering work, for example, does that get lumped into this? So that, and then, you know, if, if we then say, okay, if we approve that project, does that money that we spent on...
Previously.
Previously, does that get reallocated to the project itself? Or does it stay here? Probably stays here? Don't know?
In the past, this is the way I've accounted for it. I will certainly sit down with Jim and, uh, talk about that.
Cause that's, that, to me, that would give us an incentive to say, okay, we should have only give him projects to work on that we intend to approve.
Well, exactly.
Because if we don't approve it, then we end up having to eat that cost where if we approve it, then that, those funds spent in doing the preliminary engineering work would go into the project itself.
What I took, what I do, what I've done for years, is when I get an invoice from, well, Homestead, Central, or Interstate Engineering, in that description, they, they clearly state, okay, this is money that you should appropriate to Two Seventeen One or Two Seventeen Five.
Right.
So, then that gets, you know, to the fund. Anything other than that, you're looking at.
Right.
Another example, okay, let's talk about this. And Jim is gonna actually talk about meter readings, okay? Jim has done a lot of work for us that we have requested.
Right.
On the Mr. Freed situation.
Right.
Okay. Did we budget for that? Did we know it was gonna happen?
Right.
Uh, probably not. But it is what it is.
Well, that, well, so that's one thing where, okay, is that time that he spends, even though it's more than what we anticipated, should that come out of that project budget rather than out of this line? I guess that's, that's, where do we draw that line?
But I don't, I don't appropriate till there's this, when there's an actual assessment district created.
And that's the thing, it, it doesn't exist yet. So, we would carry it here until that project, that assessment district is actually created.
Correct.
Okay.
That makes sense.
But that would be ideally the way that we could, so, yeah. Sometimes I would assume that's hard to do, right? And say, okay, here's how many hours that Jim spent on this preliminary design work before it actually turns into an assessment.
Yeah, do I set up the money to fund that may never be created? Or we may never go forward with that project? How do, how do you want me to do that?
It's an interesting question.
It is.
We, we probably, let's talk about that some more, so let's not, let's not talk about it here.
Okay, um, so anyway, uh, we'll have to amend the budget for, uh, whatever that difference is there. And that, uh, kind of concludes my, uh, presentation. Do you have the schedules, uh, Mateo or Brian? Our debt and our investment accounts, do we have that in there? I'd like to show that to these people as well. If we don't, that's fine, I'll include it in, uh, the January statements too.
Um, what would they...
Would it be called?
Cause I'm, I'm just seeing revenue and balance.
Yeah, those are the only three.
Those, those three categories here.
This is a, this is an example of the monthly report that I create, and in there is, uh, you know, revenues, investments.
Right, right.
We need to have this in one...
Yep, I agree. One file. That should be our filing, yeah.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
So, if you, yeah, just pull that together and send, cause, I mean, that was one question I had is, is the investment accounts, those, did we get some investment income from those?
Well, we certainly did at about one point one percent.
Yeah, it's half past nothing. Yeah, unfortunately.
Uh huh.
It's...
Okay.
And, uh, right now, the schedule that you don't see is we're carrying about a twenty, twenty million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar debt, long-term debt. Twenty thousand, seven sixty-five.
Twenty thousand or twenty million?
Twenty million.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Big number. So, that's one of the things too, when we, when you guys sit down with the auditors, that might be something to have that conversation too, to see if they're still comfortable with that, and then obviously, we'll have to add a little bit more than that as we do some of these other projects, but, just based upon what they're seeing, just to make sure that they're okay with it, or if they have some concerns that they're, they wanna present to the city and let us know about that.
Is there a measure, probably like a debt ratio, or is there?
Yeah.
Is there, is there a yardstick that they use for cities?
I think there is, Brian, but this is new ground for me.
Okay.
Well, that's what I thought, so let's bring it up, let's, let's have that conversation so that we're, so that we're aware of it as we go forward here as well.
When, when you guys, when this board receives, the audit is gonna be in May. It'll take it a month and a half, and you'll get a booklet this thick, and they will write up everything that either I did wrong or that they wanna see changed.
Okay.
And that's why we pay them twelve grand.
Okay.
All right. You said that was in May they'll come out in?
Roughly. So, we probably won't get a report till late July?
We, it very likely, we don't, they have to wait till the tax season.
Yeah.
After April fifteenth.
Okay, that's...
Sometime midsummer, let me put it that way.
Okay, that's fine.
And if there's any other questions, that's the end of my report.
All right. So, let me get back to where...
Do we need to have a motion to approve the financials, year-end financials?
Sure.
John, once you got any other questions, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
No, I would make a motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen financials.
Okay.
On second hand.
Brian is the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So, the next thing that we have on our plates here, gentlemen, is the city administrator position. Now, I was...
I'll give a quick recap, a quick recap of the, uh, from the special meeting. Uh, special meeting we had, I guess it was last week, that we had, again, as we pointed out in the minutes, we had three candidates that we interviewed, Byron Cleven, Keith Burnt, and Brenton Holper. Uh, out of that, out of, we had, uh, gave them each about an hour, uh, to present to us and, and have, allow the council an opportunity to interview and question, present questions and answers. Uh, and out of that conversation, then we went into executive session and basically did a recap with our, uh, hiring consultants to, uh, get some, get some feedback from each of the, each of the council members that were present, and fortunately, almost everyone is there except Cory, but you interviewed each of them already beforehand, so you had already, uh, had a chance to get your questions answered, so... Um, out of that, uh, out of that conversation, we essentially went through each of the candidate's strengths, weaknesses, what we liked, what we didn't like on each of the candidates. And, uh, and out of that, we came from a, with a unanimous, uh, agreement on one candidate that we, uh, thought, felt, or felt that was a better fit for what we were trying to accomplish as a city. So, uh, we had, we did select, um, Brenton Holper, uh, as a candidate that we would like to, uh, allow the, uh, selection committee to proceed to, uh, negotiate an offer, uh, to, uh, see if he, we can bring him on as an ex, as our first seat administrator. So, it's a pretty, pretty interesting process that we went through and, and, oh, I gotta get signals over here.
Was he our third candidate?
Nope, first one. Brenton Holper was our first one, they, they were in reverse order on the minutes. Byron Cleven was our last one. Yep, yeah, he was the last one that got presented to us, so. Correct, John, Brenton?
Hope is...
Brenton, yes.
Do you have anything else you wanted to add to that, John?
But the names listed in here, Byron and Brenton, they're just switched in order. I don't think, reading it, the following selections were made, it wasn't in necessarily order for what you wrote down in the minutes versus how they were presented.
Yep. You wanna double check?
It'll come back to you real quick. Remember your note you wrote.
It came back to me real quick.
John, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
You know, the only question, I, I'd like to just ask, uh, Mayor Peterson a question. You know, we hired A two S and just maybe comment about the process of working with them, on how that went and...
Yeah, I'm kinda talking, Dave was the one that did, wrote the interface with them, but, uh, we did obviously the initial screening. And, uh, they helped us out by giving us a list of, of questions that we should be asking, and I believe you guys got those as well, with the initial screening questions that we went through.
Okay, in this package, correct.
Correct. And so, and I just kinda did a quick look, but it seems to me that that was pretty similar to the questions that we asked on the initial screening. And they did prep work with us prior to, you know, getting these guys in to kinda give us an idea of what we should ask, what the appropriate questions are, what not to ask. And then we just, we went through the motions with them. I, they did well, as far as I was concerned, you know, just some things that we as a council would not have been able to do. We did not...
All the background too that they did, that we found out.
Yeah, and then all this, and all that type of work, I mean, that's just, that was excellent. So, they, they helped narrow it down the field for us as well, just by giving us this, you know, list of twenty-five. And then they did all the criteria match.
Right.
And then that's what got us down to the, what we'll call the, the last, uh, eight candidates that we talked to. And then, what you guys got presented with was the three that we thought were the most, um, qualified to be brought in front here, so... And I think A two S did a great job, I really had, I, I just feel great that they were able to get involved and help us out like that, just cut down some of the things that we had to deal with.
The process of the time that you guys spent, thank you for that.
Yeah.
That was immense.
Lot of work.
And I think the process of them, the three candidates coming here was done well. Gave us good opportunity to ask questions and, and have some, um, interaction with them, so it was great that it was pretty clear cut.
Yeah, then I can, just for the record, I concur with what you guys came up with.
Okay. So, I will, uh, make a motion to, uh, allow the hiring committee to begin negotiation, uh, with the, with Brenton Holper, uh, to become our first seat administrator, uh, to allow them to, uh, work out a compensation package and so forth that will, uh, allow him to become our seat administrator.
And, uh, just, he also, when we talked, though, that was one of the questions that we asked all the candidates during the interview, was if April one was a doable time marker on theirs, and all of them said it was, so that was good, we can...
I'm honored to motion, or second that motion.
Second the motion, all right, so Brian does a motion on the, and John is the second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Or do we?
Do we need a roll call or?
Even though it's kinda easy, John?
I don't know, do we, Lucas?
Lucas, do we need...
Just do it this way, then you're covered.
John, absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Get her down.
Yep.
So, A E S, do the contact then?
Um, I will let Dave know, uh, I will let Dave know, and since he'll be up at three AM our time, uh, I, he will contact A E two S and start the, uh, contact and negotiation.
So, good.
So...
Anything else on that?
Six-month cycle, six-month process, and we started last October, November.
I know, or eight.
It's incredible. So, anyway.
All things learned, it just takes time to go through these processes.
It does.
All right, so that brings us to eight. Lucas, you are up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The first item I have is a rezone. It's for Danielson subdivision, and it's, uh, Dean Callier, um, is here. To discuss it, it's on his property where he wants the rezone done. Um, it's to go from agriculture to residential estate. The planning commission had a meeting, uh, last Tuesday to discuss this. Um, they had a public hearing, nobody was there to say anything for or against the rezone, and therefore, the planning commission recommended approval to the city council.
Is that the maps piece that you have out there?
They sent some maps earlier, so if you're up and you would see it. The property, um, this is southwest of town, and some of the property near it is also residential estate, so the planning commission didn't think it was too odd to have residential estate, strong advice.
It was interesting, I had to search a bit, find, find this plot of land.
Yeah, it's...
Actually, I had to type in the township. Actually, I had to type in the township.
Oh, you got it there? I think like last year we did Mark's property down there too, or all the tops, where we switched theirs to.
Say that again, Lucas.
Remember last year we had that one where it never had a second reading?
Trenton Mark?
Yeah, and so we brought it to the city council and it's, that was approved. That's to the kitty corner of this place.
For the city council, if you wanna take one quick look up here to give you an idea of where Dean has located this, right down here in the Danielson subdivision. And he has a beautiful log cabin way back in the trees back there, and several acres, and he someday would like to sell that off and build a house. But at this time, he just wanted to do the rezone and get the process started. He said he might do it next year, he might do it ten years from now, but he wanted to get this owning done, and we could see no reason to deny him of this because we rezoned at the Eltop, and trees right down in here too, in the Danielson subdivision area, just next door neighbors.
So one question I had with this map, I noticed this when you sent it out earlier, I mean, there's this layout, but there's this one, and they're two different format, or two different sizes of the lot. I, I didn't quite understand the difference between those two map pieces, cause I, I expected it to be the same, so I.
I think it's that if there was a potential lot split, I think it's the difference.
You're talking two different red highlighted pages, right?
So, so the second one is, is a potential lot split, is that what you're saying?
If they wanted to, they could do it, and they would still comply with the city's ordinances, just to see.
This one is the rezone.
That's the full chunk, that's the one that's getting rezoned.
Rezone from Ag to R six.
To R E, residential estate.
R E, residential estate, okay.
And I might add, when it comes time to build this house, of course, he'll have to subdivide and split, and he probably will acquire some other land to add to this, but at this time, he wants to be able to look what he, what he's got.
And what's the total acreage there?
Three acres.
Three acres?
The total acreage, the request to split is three acres, the total acres now, and what period is the reference to? The Danielsons are selling additional land to me, and that's when I contacted Jim and Kent to get them involved, and we're gonna do the plotting on it all at once. So acquiring three acres to the south or to the north of me, and dividing off, so that someday when Kathy and I don't wanna deal with all that acreage and a lot damage back in the woods, we can put a little two-bedroom rattler and a sixty-by-forty-fold playbox and call it good. We love where we live. This is a great community, and it's a, that's a great spot in the world. And we've lived there for fifteen years now.
So to clarify, we're talking, you, you were talking lot split and rezoning. We're just doing.
Right now, it's just the rezone, that's it.
But then we're adding in, I'm hearing we're adding in three acres to it?
Just, it's just, right now.
Not today.
No, it's been a trust right now, the Danielson trust.
Okay.
Grandma or Dan's mother passes, I had an agreement with Gary many years ago, purchase way up in the north. And talking with Captain Jim, they're gonna do the plotting on it at that time. We can't do it until the trust is.
Right.
Is able to do that.
Sure.
Councilman Corson, right now it's just block one, lot two, in Danielson subdivision. That's the rezone score.
Russ, you obviously didn't have any issues with any of this, so.
No, no, issues come up, issues will be dealt with at the, at either a split or in class. Having to do with easements, et cetera.
With the road.
Yeah.
You guys got any other questions on this one?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is a, it'll be a public hearing for this.
Okay, so I'll open it up for public comments on this subdivision rezone. And any comments, plus or minus? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and proceed on. You guys got any other questions or things that you wanted to?
Nope, so do you need a motion to? Need a motion to?
Yeah, so then we'll just do a first reading of it, if that's okay with, with the council and with the mayor.
Yep.
And then we'll have to do another.
We just need, we just need a motion to approve the first reading of the rezone.
Yep.
Cause we don't need to do this in two parts, right? It's just, just, just the rezone is what we're doing right now.
That's all we're doing right now, is just the rezone. Rezone from Ag to residential estate.
Approve the rezone.
Okay, Brian, we're approving the rezone from Ag to residential states.
I'll second.
John does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is approved.
So we'll have a second reading next meeting, next meeting. Cause it's just the two meetings that, and it can, it'll be done, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next one I have actually came at your request, which was revamping the landscaping ordinance. The city only had one paragraph basically that dealt with landscaping, so I took a look at other cities and tried to merge one to something that Horace can use, could use in the future. I do not expect you guys to go through this all.
I was gonna say, we got a five-minute speed read here, right?
I, I have sent it to already.
I know you did. No, has it changed?
It has been revised.
Okay, I was gonna say.
At the planning commission. And so the, the planning commission at their last meeting last Tuesday, recommended approval of this ordinance. It had gone through planning commission, I think, what, three meetings on it, Chairman Sarr?
What we removed was, there were some fluffing words in there, just to make the videos feel good.
All right. As long as you got rid of the fluff, we're good to go then, right?
The chairman requested that I remove some verbiage.
I just felt fluffy.
The nice thing, the nice thing about this ordinance, Mr. Mayor, is it basically gives guidelines to new developments that come in and say, okay, if you're gonna have this development, here's what you need to have, and it's a nice detailed ordinance that it got, walks you through it pretty easily, so you know what, what you'll need.
But I think this kinda dovetails into that forestry beautification thing that we're trying to get through here as well, so I mean, this is gonna be, this is kinda what we were looking for.
So I guess this is a question for planning and zoning, has this become a, you guys become the enforcement element of this new ordinance before it goes in? Where, where does the enforcement of the ordinance come into play?
Is never an enforcement.
Well, but if, if nothing else, review.
Yes, that, that's how it'll work is, it'll be on the checklist.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean. So, so you're, you're gonna go through and you're gonna say, it does, everything meets all these other criteria, but it doesn't meet the landscaping ordinance.
A requirement in here is you have to have a landscaping plan from a professional engineer, and so they'll have to present that.
It's gonna be no different than having a drain plan. In other words.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if you put on a list, and that's not checked off, it doesn't.
It doesn't come here.
It doesn't, it doesn't come to us.
So the good news is now we can present this to the developers and say, here's what you need to, here's where you're gonna be assessed, you know, by, before you bring a development plan to us.
One of the things that requires is actually improved tree lists, and Lucas has supplied me with one of those to review.
Okay.
And then move it back.
Okay.
And that way, it's, it's keeping in the same look of West Fargo and with the county, and that way, Horace doesn't have random trees, West Fargo doesn't have random trees. It's keeping in that same area.
Be a metro wide because.
And I'm assuming that West Fargo got theirs from the county, because the counties typically have a list that they go by.
Well, and that, that list is changing too.
Well, and you, and yeah, and you have to, they want you to diversify your tree portfolio.
They're changing some of the ordinances for Emerald Ash or Ash.
Yeah, I, I have Ash.
I know.
Most of mine are dying too.
I know, that's the problem is.
You, you want some possible trees.
We don't want to, we wanna diversify the trees so that we can reduce our overall risk, right?
And that's one of the things too right now, is there's a gala that'll be coming here on Thursday night for our beautification and forestry meeting, and she's gonna go over some of that too, about what some of the recommended trees are and things like that. So we'll start getting that list together, and it'll, it'll go into this thing as well, so. Cool.
So I think, I think the best move for tonight would just be, there's a public hearing on this, because this will affect the land use title of the city's ordinances. So whenever there's an ordinance that affects the land use, it goes through planning commission, and then it goes through the city council. And when that happens, if it ever goes to planning, there's a public hearing requirement, so we've just been attaching the public hearing requirement to planning, and then to city council. So I figured we could just at least get over, get over the public hearing tonight.
Right.
And then you guys can review it. What's that?
And it's not a first reading.
No, I don't think that'd be a good idea considering, I don't know if you guys have went through it at all and.
I, I did back when you first sent.
And it has changed since then.
Yeah, and that's the one I looked through.
Yeah.
So we should look it over again, but, so you wanna do public comment tonight then?
Yep.
You did publish this in the paper and stuff like that, so, all right. For the motions I'll go through, we'll open it up for public hearing on our landscaping ordinance. Anybody got any comments up or down on it? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and we'll.
So one question, Lucas, is it, we should post this on, like the website for public input?
You definitely could, cause you're still gonna have a first reading and a second reading.
Right, but I mean, we could make an announcement out there.
I think we should.
Consider, consider input from the residents and so forth.
Absolutely.
Residents are gonna have an issue, but, yeah.
No, but I think this would be good to let people know we're doing this, so this is part of the.
That's my point, right.
But part of the process that we're trying to get, you know, just beautify things up a little bit.
And I mean, it will affect current residents too, because there's provisions in there that if a tree dies, you have to replace that tree, and here's what kind of tree you should replace it with.
Okay.
Yep.
So yeah, I think that would be beneficial.
But the, the intent is not to say, okay, here's the new rules, and everyone's gonna have to meet these new rules, it's just.
That won't, yeah, it won't happen that way. So then, when would be a good time to bring this back? Should we skip a meeting and then bring it back, or do you wanna do first reading at the next meeting?
We can do it next meeting.
Yeah, let's you guys take time and just go through it, I mean.
Once you start, you're, it's, it's a pretty quick read.
Yep.
Just walks you through the process.
I'd say let's go ahead and plan for the next, next meeting, let's get that first reading done. And then if we have to go a little longer to do a second reading, that's fine, but if we wanna do some more, or somebody's got some ideas on changing it, but I think let's get the first reading done.
Does anybody else wanna copy that?
In your research, you probably already did it, so Conservation District has someone that will actually sit down with you, and so that's who has the issue, and show you what works in this area.
That's where I get my trees, is from the county, and so that's how I figured.
We planted sixty-five hundred trees over the last fifteen, sixteen years out there. And I've got some that are just, you know, you water them, they'll grow, and then there's others like, in the Conifer, like the ponderosa, as well, and pine needles, just love it here.
Do the deer love them too? Yeah, I know they do. They loved them all my way.
That's why I have them.
I didn't think deer eat, would eat those pine needles, but they chewed it right down to the root.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really helpful.
All right, Lucas, what's the next one?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next one, medical marijuana. Chairman Sarr loves this one. Uh, so as you know, we've discussed this before, with the enactment of the medical marijuana law that went into effect last year, these facilities are going to be popping up across the state. Compassion centers, there's, that's the general term, and then there's manufacturing facilities and dispensaries. There will be two manufacturing facilities located across the state and eight dispensaries. It's what the North Dakota Legislature approved so far, and so with that, they want to put these in locations that will serve the most qualified patients, and there is a potential that Horace could get one of these facilities because of its close proximity to West Fargo and Fargo. West Fargo has already enacted an ordinance that regulates the location of these compassion centers. I'm not sure if Fargo has gotten one yet, but Horace does not have one. So what this does is under the North Dakota Century Code, one of the requirements is that before a compassion center goes, is constructed at all, the applicant has to meet the city's zoning ordinance. So this says, here's where you can and cannot have a compassion center. And so they will have to comply with the city's ordinance before anything is constructed, or even before their application gets approved at the state level. The State Department of Health will be regulating this for the most part, and so I figured it'd be best if the city would regulate its location. Now, the planning commission had a public hearing on this last Tuesday. They did not recommend approval or denial, because they couldn't agree on one of the sections that related to the distance in which a compassion center is located to a daycare, pre-existing school, or residential district, which is the, um.
That or conditional use thing?
Section six.
Like a quarter mile, right?
It's one thousand two hundred fifty feet from any pre-existing school, daycare facility, or any property zoned residential.
Oh, or any property.
Correct, and so that's where there was a disagreement in the planning commission. Chairman Sarr is here, he can.
Let me explain to you, first of all, Lucas, tell them what the, the state law requires.
Yeah, I mean, that should help. Under state law, it's one thousand feet from a pre-existing school, so a compassion center cannot be located near that. And so what we did is add the daycare facilities and then residential, and then add two hundred fifty feet.
So the difference being that we only had four present, and we had two that wanted to go strictly by the state rate, and two that liked these dimensions, in other words. And we, we are strict, we can't go less than the state, but we have gone more than the state and added residential. Now, basically what that means is for one of these facilities to come into the city of Horace, it's gonna be pretty much on the fringes of its, probably in our E P. To meet, to meet the requirements as that is written. And like I said, the, the difference being that we couldn't agree, we had a two-two vote on, on sending it this way, a two-two vote on sending it with just the state restrictions, which means that we, we did, we did nothing on it.
Other than hurt it.
But overall, the planning commission liked the idea of having this ordinance, it was just that disagreement on, like he said, the distance and then what's included.
Cause in some regard, this is like a, just any other medical facility. The compassion center is like any other medical facility, right?
Depends on who you ask.
Well, I.
You know what I mean?
Fair, I mean, it, that, that's the intention though.
Yeah, that we're doing, we're, we're using, we're, we're, we're having a facility which uses a federally illegal drug.
As I said, it depends on who you ask.
See, that's, that's the question. Doesn't matter what the state has said, it is still a federally illegal drug. So. One of the other things was, as far as I was concerned, that this is an issue which purely needs to be dealt with by election officials.
Thank you. But still, but still, I mean, you guys, for planning and zoning purposes, we need to know where we're gonna put these things if we are gonna agree to put something like that in town, right? So that's where, so Lucas, why did we go, was this pretty much like what West Fargo had written as far as that clause?
Yep.
They'd added that statements in there?
Did they go, they went a thousand feet?
One thousand two fifty.
They went twelve feet.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
It's the, it's the same with the daycare, they added daycare facility and they added residential.
So they're in the same ballgame now, their stuff would be in the, pretty much out at the fringe elements.
Or, or in industrial area.
And that was, we had meetings, cause I was in on that one, and it was meetings with the, the police department as well, and then with planning to, over, okay, where's the best place to put this?
So what do you look forward, how do you develop around that?
Well, that's the, that's the challenge is, is we can't automatically then say, all right, that one thousand two hundred fifty feet is off limits to any residential. If a landowner around that decides that they want to build, how can we tell them no?
Because it doesn't fit, and we have to go back to our land use, we'll, we'll plan, is flat out what you do at that point.
Okay, well then we would have to grant them a variance, right?
One of the things, which reminds me, is the state regulation says, any, like for a school, it says, any current school. Like, for a school, it says, any current school. Is that correct?
Yep, any pre-existing school.
Any pre-existing school. In other words, we don't have a pre-existing school.
Right.
Uh, high school, so if you pass this, the circle gets drawn based on the elementary school as far as schools.
Right.
And you don't get a new circle. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lucas, you don't get a new circle when you add, um.
But if you say residential, then that changes the equation.
Okay, this becomes, this is limitation on this facility, it isn't limitation. Again, Lucas, you're gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see where you could build a res- a residence five hundred feet away from this. And everything still is hunky-dory.
Well, we would have to grant a variance cuz that residential lot would violate the ordinance. Once this is, if, if it's enacted, then a new residential lot, five hundred feet away, would violate this ordinance, so we would have to grant them a variance to this ordinance.
I don't believe that's true. You're not, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't draw a new circle when the high school goes in.
Well, I'm, right, I get the school, but I'm saying a residential area.
Same, it's.
Same thing.
But there's residential across from where the new school's planned. No, no, you don't understand what, what I'm saying is you don't draw a new circle because.
It just depends on where pre-existing attaches to, does pre-existing attach to the school, daycare facility, and residential, or does pre-existing just attach to the school, I think is what you're questioning.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
That.
Where does the word pre-existing attach?
You see, I think that's a discussion that you guys are gonna have to, this can be, this can be. Put in there, how you wanna handle this.
And keep in mind that these facilities are also restricted to light industrial and general industrial districts.
Yes.
The, the dispensary.
And so that's, okay, so it might not work as well in, in Horace. In West Fargo, they had enough space where if it is in those zones, they're not gonna be within a residential zone.
Okay, so looking at this, you have pre-existing school, daycare facility, or new property zoned residential, you gotta be twelve hundred fifty feet away from. Yeah, you are in E T, anywhere you look at it, so. The new school coming in would be protected in my eyes because you've got existing residential right there.
Yes, it is.
So, that's where, you have to make the three hurdles, right there. You have to be away from all three of those things, correct?
That's how it sits, that's how it's written right now, yeah.
Now you just said light, industrial, or commercial?
That, it has to be zoned.
It has to be zoned.
In light industrial or, um, general industrial, under section.
So it replaces its law.
Section two and section three.
And those areas we got zoned right now. Would not fit. Because they're, they're within residential.
Okay, the thing that's interesting here is, okay, we, we talked about three different types of facilities, compassion center, dispensary, and manufacturing.
Two, compassion center is both of those.
Compassion center is both of the dispensary and the manufacturing.
A manufacturing facility and a dispensary are compassion centers. There's two different facilities. The manufacturing facility will grow it, then they give it to the distribution center, or the dispensary, and then they distribute to the qualified patients.
I, I, see, I, I, the way I understood that the compassion, okay. Oh, medicinal marijuana, manufacturing facility, or dispensary.
The definition section.
Yes.
Okay, so it's either of them. They, they use compassion center as a lump to either one of them.
Correct.
I'm with you.
Definition section is section two.
Alright, that's why I was confused by that, okay.
So what I think is beneficial, considering there's only three, two members of the council and the mayor, I think tonight we just have the public hearing. Think about this, think about that distance, and then think about, do you want to also include daycare and residential? You have to, you have to have this pre-existing school and a thousand feet, that can't change.
Well, and just by the fact that seventeen six eleven says it has to be light industrial or general industrial.
That I think you want.
Hmm?
I think you wanna keep that.
Well, I get it, but that limits where you can even consider it, cuz number one, you have to be zoned as that.
The only general commercial north of, is where I'm located at.
Right.
Not the only commercial, general industrial.
Yeah.
No, 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 the only general commercial we have today.
Right, oh, general industrial.
It's a general industrial.
It's industrial.
It's, it's I one or I two, right, that's it. And the only thing we got.
And that, that you can change.
Twelve hundred fifty feet, how many blocks is that, roughly?
Block of three hundred fifty feet.
So three blocks, roughly four blocks.
Almost four blocks.
And that's what I said, think about it, we can talk about it at the next meeting, but just keep in mind, you have to keep a thousand feet from a school.
So what, what is the, this those areas, that like industrial?
That's light industrial.
Yeah, and they just bought another hundred and fifty acres.
So that, that would probably be the most likely, if one was gonna land out here, it would land in that light industrial.
Because you gotta, you gotta, you gotta neighborhood, you gotta house residential, it's right across the street, in the south. Nope, you got ag land across the street. All that one house that's there is.
That's there.
That's a plan?
Okay. That's there.
Okay.
But, country acres. Is residential. But you'd have, you see, you'd essentially have to land it.
In the right plot, quarter mile back.
Quarter mile back. From county seventeen.
We are not borrowing them from the town.
Right.
Which I believe also Lucas would tell us that we cannot do.
Right.
But you could also come in and ask for, take ag land and ask for his own change somewhere else if it fit in, correct?
Fits in with our land.
If it fits in with our land use plan. So if this does make sense for us, we do have opportunity to put it somewhere if we do wanna do that as well, so we're not banning it.
And but the only way, the option is even there is if we enact this ordinance. Cuz I, without this, it's not even an option.
No, but right now, it, it, right now, it can go basically any place in town.
Cuz it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have any restrictions.
No, I, I thought the requirement was that, that there has to be an ordinance in place for them to even consider.
They just have to comply with the city zoning ordinances, and they wouldn't be violating the city's ordinances.
Oh, cuz there is none.
Cuz there, yeah.
Yeah, they're going on state statute at that point.
We put it in next to John's place.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think tonight we should just have the public hearing.
Okay, so, I'll open it up for public hearing, if anybody's got any comments or questions on this. Ordinance that we're looking at? Anybody?
Medicinal marijuana.
Remember, plans to talk on this in the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It took a lot of time in, in, in planning zoning.
Yeah, I can see why, cuz I mean, this isn't just cut and dry.
No, it is not.
No. Um. Yeah, I'm still, you know, too, about putting it by at the school and daycare, I can see that, you know, and then the property zone residential. Okay, I can see that too, but. So what was the extra two hundred fifty feet, I mean, what was the purpose of that? It just seems like an arbitrary number, or was there just to make it, to make the gap wider?
No, it was discussed in, to keep it further away from some of the residential, um.
That's what I'm saying, just to add another buffer, right? That's what it was for, okay. Okay, well, any other comments on the public hearing, otherwise I'll close that. I guess, um.
Yeah.
There'll be more discussion on this, but I think.
That's what I was chuckling about, we couldn't get it to plan in the building.
Yeah, but I don't really wanna do any more conversation until these guys come back either, cuz we got.
Yep.
It's a lot of stuff to go over, but at least we got some initial conversation hashed out on that, so Lucas, let's move along then.
Sounds good, uh, Mr. Mayor, the next item is the biggest ordinance of them all. I believe, and that is miscellaneous zoning amendments. Latest and greatest. So this, um, some of these are at the request of the chairman of the planning commission, um, so we loaned them all together in one. I think we do this, well, once every year, we just do it.
Is this your omnibus, uh, bill? That you wanna put before us here, Russ?
Uh, this is the, oh, trust me, we have another one that we're working on.
Fair enough.
You want me to answer questions?
Certainly.
Okay, obviously, everything that's underlined is new.
Right.
Page one, that's just the change in definitions. And it involved, uh, the last conditional use issue we had here, there was a difference in interpretation. And what I'm asking for is, is to, uh, put in code my interpretation of the, of the way we've. My interpretation. So, keep that in mind, this is, uh. Just to eliminate some of the discussion we had back and forth, uh. And under conditional use, again, this is just the definition at the front of the book. Uh, what, adding, when restrictions, the ordinance restricts the distance from a property to be granted a conditional use permit. In other words, if you want to, uh, get a conditional use on a property. And there are restrictions in distance. Where you can get this conditional use, for instance, uh, uh, you want a conditional use on some of the industrial stuff, it's five hundred feet. Conditional use on some of the commercial, there may be two hundred feet from residential. The distance is measured from the nearest lot line to the nearest lot line. It's not measured from the building, it's measured from the lot lines, because the conditional use applies. To the lot, not the building.
Not the building, okay.
Okay, the next one is huge, that next, that next, no, that next, the next sentence there. Request for zoning changes will not be granted if a conditional use permit must be granted with the zoning change. It's how we actually used to do it, the issue has come up several years ago. And at that time, the lawyer said, you can't do that if you're gonna do this. If it takes a, a conditional use permit to get the zoning change, you should not be doing the zoning change. Now, again, this is, keep in mind, now I'm gonna argue against me to you. What this is doing is it's taking some of the control away from you. This becomes city ordinance. Uh, both of sentences, one is just a definition, this last one says that you won't give a conditional use permit if that's what it takes to get a zoning change.
But that's fine, if it's codified like this, that way it's not subjective from up here.
Makes your life easier.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Codifies it, so.
Next page. Uh, you're gonna see this, this, uh, sentence added to a bunch of, uh. Uh, this is on C one neighborhood commercial, you're gonna see we've added it, uh, through all the commercial. Other, uses not listed but similar to the permitted uses above and consistent with the stated purpose of this district.
The catch-all.
It's, it's a catch-all. Uh. John's business did not fit. He got his permit for his business, it would've been much better if we had a sentence like this, because John's business totally fit with where he was at. But, the permitted uses is not an exhaustive list of everything that will fit in, in that zone.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's what that sentence is for.
Perfect.
Uh. Next, okay, the same page, that's page two, down at the bottom, you're gonna see the word interior crossed out and the word exterior. Put in for side lot. What this has to do is, in the commercial districts, where you, where you have buildings which are continuous buildings. In other words, you've got one business, another business, another business, it's a strip mall, but they. That works if you have. A single lot, single owner of the lot. But what if you have a strip mall that has three businesses with three lots? They would each have to have a ten-foot side yard between buildings under the current reading.
Right.
What this means is by changing that word interior to exterior, and this word is courtesy of our planner. Who was at our meeting. What it allows is to have the continuous building, and then you have ten feet at the end.
Right. That, oh, that makes sense.
Okay. Page four, other uses, again.
Another catch-all, yeah.
Okay. Page five, yard requirements, and that's for, uh, town center commercial and general commercial. And light industrial. We did the same thing, and what we're changing to is. Uh, the setbacks from the front. And the rear, and the minimum side yard setbacks. On all of them, because what we had, uh, were excessive. In some cases, uh, under light industrial, for instance, we did a variance for Vistos. Because he had to be a hundred feet back from a street. It was a frontage road, folks. Uh. Made, we, we were giving him an unbuildable lot. And what we're, what we're changing here too actually is all the same distances that we have for the neighborhood commercial. And basically R one. Uh, we're changing the setbacks to something that makes sense, that we don't have to do variances in the future, uh.
I mean, this is a similar, if you have a small downtown, and I'm thinking like Lisbon or, you know, Oaks or something like that, they would have a similar ordinance like this for their downtown district.
Okay, I think, this is an aside now, aside from this, I think we're gonna have to develop. We have a picture of a possible new downtown. Dream. I think we're gonna have to develop, uh, a new ordinance for setbacks for that. Because, let's say if you went down on Broadway. Uh, we, we could not possibly build a street that looks like that. Under our current ordinances due to setbacks.
Right.
So, I'm thinking, uh, that is going to become a new zoning district.
Well, that, that's why like the town center commercial district falls into that section, right? That, that would be where this section would fall. We would probably have a new section for that type of.
E- exactly, and I anticipate, that, right now we're working on, uh. Multi-family residential.
Right.
Uh.
Well, let's just make it simple, Mr. Chairman, it's task you was starting that process of writing that, uh, ordinance up and start the discussion there, should be pretty simple.
Oh, it's not gonna be simple, but I'm, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Uh, for, for this setback.
For, for, for these setbacks, for this, yes, it's, that's why I'm bringing it up here, uh, we haven't started working on it yet because none of these are simple.
Right, no, I, it's a good, good move.
Okay, uh. Next one we see is page seven, we have, uh, again for that, other uses, and at C three, it's still the same setbacks. Uh, light industrial.
Same thing.
Other uses, setbacks. Industrial. Uh, we didn't change the setbacks, we, other uses. Otherwise, what we've, we've found in general is the permitted uses, uh. You can't list everything you possibly would logically find there. Okay, the next section, we have a main street design review board. It exists, and basically it's an overlay district that says that city, in the. People of the planning commission get to look at the design of your building. And has to meet certain criteria. The criteria is broad, but what it does keep you from doing is building a, a metal building with no. Enhancements to it. with no enhancements to it on Main Street. The issue I have with our current one occurs on page eleven. The top paragraph used to read, for purposes of this section, the main street and commercial districts shall mean that area encompassed by the boundaries delineated on the official zoning map. Uh, that has never occurred. Okay, so it, it's meaningless.
Okay.
What I request to change it to is those areas on the official zoning map and our comprehensive plan zoned commercial. And Lucas pointed out to me that this next, this next comma, right after zone commercial, is crucial. Including along arterial roads. These areas compose the main street design district. The reason that comma is crucial, and it was stupid luck on my part, or intention on his, we haven't decided which. What it does is if someone decides to build, uh, an industrial plant on one hundredth, even though it's not commercial, we get to look at it. We get to look what's facing, what's facing our arterial roads, and every section line is by the, is by definition.
An arterial road.
Arterial road. And other than that, it's, we get to look at everything commercial, everything's on commercial. The city gets to control, to a degree, what it looks like.
Could we even add in there, these areas composed as a main street slash town center design?
You could, but there's no need for it, because your town center is going to be commercial, and it's covered.
Okay.
Now, the next one is under the section of variances. Uh, there was a word there that wasn't shall, that Lucas didn't like, I know it's will or may or whatever. Uh, I think it's will, he wanted shall, but the last line is my addition. Variances shall not be abused, shall not be used to obtain a conditional use permit. By definition, this was again, a, a difference in interpretation. Very interesting.
Sure, sure is it up a little bit.
This, again, this is my wording. It does take something away from what you can do as a city council. Or get faced with, as a city council.
Does it always, or does it also prevent something that would make sense?
No.
Potentially?
The reason I say no is the reason you have zoning ordinances is, is, is to put in code the way you want the city to look. If you have to do something that requires a variance to grant a conditional use permit, in other words, you wanna put industrial in, and the, the conditional use they want for industrial requires it to be five hundred feet away from residential. If you wanna put, uh, that conditional use in on that industrial, maybe it shouldn't be there. But you're also gonna find, you cannot cover every contingency.
No.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that says main street design and all arterial roads, uh, that gets put on that zoning map, uh, that's also gonna be used by BIS and everybody else. Um, how are you gonna decipher that so you clarify where main street is? If I come to town from Oregon, how am I gonna know if they all say main street?
I don't, I don't ask, know what you're asking, because this is a, this is none of those are gonna be known as main street.
Well, it's gotta be put on the zoning map, you just quoted that.
You didn't read it.
Yeah, I did read it several times.
Okay. For purposes of this section, main street and commercial districts shall mean those areas of the official zoning map and our comprehensive plan zoned commercial.
Including arterial roads.
Including arterial roads.
Including arterial roads. What does that have to do with everything being called main street? This actually means there's nothing on that zoning map that, that defines. We presently have nothing on the zoning map, uh, that is look, that is labeled as the main street design district. All I'm trying to do is say where it covers and not have to update the zoning map anytime something new happens.
And it also says in there that you, you've got thirty days to look at a permit, and then you can give them a thirty day extension. That means in the middle of the summer, he comes in in June and he can't get his permit, they'll, uh, possibly?
Okay, keep in mind, I didn't add that, that's already in the code.
I know, I'm not saying you put it in there, I'm just saying it is in there.
Yes, it is, that hasn't changed.
And that's why council needs to realize that.
I do have a concern with the, including along arterial roads, because residential is potentially along an arterial road. And then is planning gonna be reviewing every time there's an application for a house? So that's something to think about. It works great if it's commercial and industrial, but if there is industri, or residential, then we have an issue.
Excluded residential?
Could.
Because then that's just the common sense of our zoning.
And does that alleviate your concern? Is your concern still that there is no actual district on the map that is the main street district?
Yes.
To review?
Thank you.
So do you see what Perry's saying? It's, it's typically, it's supposed to be, here's on your map, here's where your main street area is. But with the way it's written now, you can have that chunk along here, but then you're also gonna have it branch out on all your.
Should, should that be highlighted on a map, just to help out? I don't see harm in that.
But you see what I'm saying? So if you go on that map, you're gonna have lines down it, you can have a. Yeah.
So it would make sense to, I think, well, that map needs to get updated anyway, so we could add that.
But your, your arterials aren't changing, you, they, I mean, they're there.
Right.
Now.
Right.
Charlie said on March twenty seventh, Brian, that he'll be here, and they will have that zoning map for review.
Okay.
He just called me today.
So we're, but this is another detail we could add to that.
Yeah, definitely decide to do it, yes, correct.
So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I think that would be a good clarification, it's more of a clarification and awareness.
Right.
Is what, where I pointed. I can't disagree.
Your word detail is what makes sense, it's a detail drawn on the map so you know what it is.
Okay, but how, how far do you draw the line?
If that's the detail you wanna put on the map, then disregard the requested change I've put there. Becau, and now we have, now you're gonna have to determine where your detail goes.
Okay, well.
Correct.
Okay, maybe I'm missing what you're saying, but I'm saying we're marking on the map what your paragraph is.
That is possible right now, and the moment, the moment that we add a new commercial section.
Then you add that in.
But here.
As soon as it's zoned, as soon as you take a section of ag, it's zoned a commercial.
It's automatic.
This flows right, yes, it's automatic.
Yes.
Yeah. And then when that comes on our map, then that's highlighted. You may have an additional highlight.
So which one of the, like seventy six is?
Yep.
Okay, well, these are all residential, so now how far does this district go? Cause that's what the main street design review board looks at, so is it just properties that are right next to it?
Oh, you're saying how far off?
How big is this? Yeah, on, so you're gonna write it on this map, where is it? That's my concern.
But, but I, I think it takes care of both, when you say the arterial roads or the commercial zone. Cause if you come in two blocks and you're zoning that commercial, then it falls under the category.
But right now, it just says along the arterial, so.
Yes, but it's, it's, it's both. I'm reading it as both. Zone commercial, including along.
Then it wouldn't include industrial like he wanted it to, you know what I mean? Then the industrial over here wouldn't count, cause it's not commercial.
It, it should be zoning industrial and commercial, I think.
And then that alleviates your issue with, um, residential, but then it doesn't.
And then you can exclude, if you wanna do a specific exclusion of residential, I think that's fine.
I would recommend then the, probably the exclusion of residential and the inclusion of industrial, because I think it's gonna make a difference for us, uh, what it looks like. Let's say we get to keep one hundredth avenue, it'll make a difference to us what it looks like for people coming in from the city.
Agreed.
And there's, maybe we'll get to keep one hundredth.
Right. Why don't you rewrite that, and then we'll bring it back again? Cause we're just doing public hearing tonight, correct?
Correct.
Which I suppose.
And we should have full board to.
To go over this a little bit more, I want.
Yes.
Here, but we've got, we can have the public meeting on this, obviously, but.
How far into a subdivision is this gonna apply? Is it any commercial if it's anywhere? Because it's along arterial road, is there only access? Or is it going to just be the buildings that face the highway?
All commercial.
Okay, so you take.
That's what I wanna plug with.
Yeah, all commercial, and I, I, I interpret that. Lucas, do you interpret that when the time comes?
Right now, yes, it's all commercial. My concern is with the, including along arterial, which, as it says right now, includes industrial, residential, commercial. I mean, you're, you're having the planning commission, which is your main street design review board, look at every application that comes through Perry. So he's having a look at the, or excuse me, the planning commission would then have to look at a house.
Exclude the, ex, excluding the residential.
Okay, so now, now we're just set with industrial and, um, commercial.
Yes.
But then, now, now it's Perry's question, okay, how do you draw that on the map? Just wherever it's the.
Yeah.
Just commercial and industrial districts, just highlight those.
Well, actually, you even put that on a key, I believe, the area, you put it on the key, it doesn't have to be highlighted.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it's a line item next to it. All those ones that you have, uh, town center commercial, general commercial, I, I'd make sure we include all the districts that are on our map and have a line subject to review board. Yeah, let's not, I, I think that.
Perry, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that give us our, our power? Or what, I shouldn't use power, but does it use, give us our authority to?
To handle it, yep.
Yeah, and does it make it clear for, uh, Perry coming in from Oregon, you said you were from or wherever, knowing that you wanted to build something?
So I'm gonna add industrial and remove residential, or exclude residential.
Do you need to be specific on these districts that are listed on our zoning map?
I don't know what your question is.
It was a statement.
Well, you got C one, C two.
Oh, that's what you meant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Being, being more specific.
Commercial would include all your commercial districts.
I would include C and I.
Okay.
I would not put numbers on it.
No.
All C and all I districts.
Because what I'm looking at is working on the C four.
Yep. When we add another one, it would automatically.
Yes.
Come under that.
Okay. So I'll revise it then and just bring it to the next.
We're still gonna do a public hearing?
Yep.
Can you even, why don't you send it out? We should do some due diligence, agree this ahead of time.
But we can, but we wanna do, we could do a public hearing.
Yes, absolutely.
Cause that's been listed in the paper, so. I'll, uh, open it up for public hearing on our miscellaneous.